Just a few quick announcements. The Ask Me Anything that was originally planned for this Thursday has been postponed. Select Board members Anne Marie Foley and Mark Alamo will host the AMA at the Grafton Historical Society one week later on Thursday, March 14th at 7:00 PM. The Inspector of Buildings, Bob Berger, will be joining them as a special guest. Grafton Recreation is now hiring for Summer 2024. Learn more about the available positions and apply online at graftonrec.com. Special announcement on tonight's agenda, please be aware that the executive session included on tonight's select board agenda will be passed over. We have no public hearings. We have no select board appointments, so our first item of business is our town administrator and fire chief appointments. And we'll start with the Assistant Treasurer Collector Christine Achu.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Christine Achu to the position of Assistant Treasurer Collector.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, next up, we have the Data Collector, Brittany Flynn.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Brittany Flynn to the position of Data Collector.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have the Treasurer Collector Administrative Assistant Barbara Alves.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Barbara Alves to the position of Administrative Assistant in the Treasurer Collector's office.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have the Auxiliary Firefighter Alexandra Shawn.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Alexander Shawn as an auxiliary firefighter at Station Two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have new business. We have, first up, a one-day beer and wine license for Apple Tree Arts at One Grafton Common.
Just go ahead with the motion.
I don't see anybody in person or online, so yes.
Let me, just let me, that's me now.
That's okay.
Let me just look at the participants list and see if there's any attendee. Nope, I think we're, I think we're good.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Apple Tree Arts on Saturday, March 23rd, and Saturday, April 6th of 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? By our none. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have a one-day all alcohol license for the Cummings School of Veterinary Medicine.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve a one-day all alcohol license for Cummings Veterinary, sorry, Cummings School of Veterinary Medicine on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have Mr. Canoyer here to give us an update on the North Street sidewalk project. Welcome.
Thanks for having me. Um, I used to be the only with these on. So you guys signed a thing six months ago, VHB, to design the sidewalk from where it ends at the intersection of North Street and Old Westboro Road down past, yo, what's the name of the same, Clearview, in the Stonegate neighborhoods? We grabbed those neighborhoods to continue the sidewalk. It's being paid for through the ARPA funds, which was one of the most popular choices when we did the voting for what people would like to see. So that's the plan there. I just wanted to come before you guys because when we go out to bid, which hopefully I gotta do in the next month, you guys will be signing that contract, so I just wanted to bring you up to date on the where we are. This is, that plan's like 95%. Brian and I made some last changes, which was at our last meeting with them, but it's a fairly, fairly easy job. It's like I say, it takes off from where the old one ends and at least connects those three streets to the existing stuff. And it also will connect the school to that 95 North Street park that is under construction, the old bank vault property, so.
Great. Any questions?
I have a question. I don't know if it said it in here, like, what is the surface?
Uh, asphalt.
Okay, like, so just like contiguous with what's there.
Yeah, it'll be, you know, sort of be similar to what's on North Street if you take a look at what's on North Street right now. Be the same materials.
Did you have any resident input concerns, any particular issues with the design?
No, it's, you know, it's fairly, if you, it's, think of five feet from the side of the edge of the road right now, which, you know, be right up against the side of the street, so. Um, there's, you know, those people, we've, several letters from people from those, from the Clearview Street and from Stonegate over time, requesting the sidewalk be installed. And, I mean, you drive up that road all the time, there's people walking constantly on those streets, so. It's a good, it's a good spot, it's a good use for the money, it connects the school to all those properties and makes that, just continues that sidewalk.
Yeah, it'd be great when the park goes in there as well.
Yep.
Sure. Any other comments, questions?
So the biggest thing on it is gonna be, there's gonna be some larger trees that need to come down to do it. A lot of them are in poor health anyway, so it'll just, you know, and part of the project will be, you know, ask the residents what they would like to see placed, you know, we'll plant trees on their property, so.
Yep.
Distance away from the sidewalk so they're not right up against the street, so.
Got it.
But that'll be, that'll be it.
Makes sense.
All right, cool, just wanted to bring up the date just so you, you know.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks, Paul.
Everybody loves more sidewalks.
Always a pleasure.
I'd hang out more, but, you know.
I don't want to.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, great. Next up, we have allocation of the remaining ARPA funds and a request to dissolve the committee.
Yep, so I had sent a memo to the Select Board requesting the repurposing of some ARPA dollars as well as some allocation. And so what I've requested is that you allocate $75,000 to Grafton Public Schools, and this is for two different software and app-based initiatives that the schools are undertaking. One is for safety and security, so think, you know, active shooter, that type of scenario, and a whole bunch of other, you know, things. And then one is a mental health-driven product that gives people access to different features that they may need at different times throughout their career. So I received a request for, to help with this project from Dr. Trahan and Dr. Cummings. They're both really spearheaded the choice of that software. And of course, I just said, sure, we'll help figure that out because I think it's important. It's also in line with one of the things that the ARPA Committee was trying to put together there towards the end, which is some kind of mental health initiative. Most mental health initiatives turned out to be much too expensive for really what we had for ARPA money, but this seems to be a really great way to target that, or target a very vulnerable population that may need those supports. The other nice thing is that $75,000 funds both of those softwares for five years each, so it's not a one-off purchase. So that'll bring some stability that then the school department can figure out how to carry that on after that. And then the other thing I asked is that we have some money that is sitting in a radio project that it doesn't look like we're gonna be needing, at least in the near future. So I've asked that the board vote to rescind the ARPA funding for radio upgrades in the amount of $50,000 and reallocate that $25,000 to Grafton Fire, and that's for standpipe-related equipment. Chief and I were discussing the other night that, you know, we're getting some taller construction, and in those taller constructions, they always talk about, they call them Siamese connections, so it's basically two ports and then it's a standpipe. And our standpipe connection equipment is not really up to snuff for what we're gonna see in the next, say, two to five years. And so I'm requesting that you fund $25,000 of standpipe-related equipment and also $25,000 to the Grafton Police to upgrade their drone program. So they have, I believe, two Part 107 certified drone pilots on staff. They use that drone for a myriad of things, but one of the, one of the key components, I think, is the thermal imaging to help find people, whether that's bad people or good people, right? We have people with Alzheimer's dementia go missing, we have children go missing, we have animals go missing, and this is a technology that helps with that, so. And then third was that I think that we've hit the end of the road for the ARPA Committee. I think that the ARPA Committee has done some fantastic work, but the dollars have pretty much all been allocated at this point. Any additional ARPA dollars that we have are gonna be because of projects that come in under budget or we need to move money from one line to another. So I don't think that there's a need for the ARPA Committee moving forward. I talked with committee members and I've talked with the Chair, Laura Offen, who you may or may not know. I know, I made that joke earlier today, I just wanted to do it again.
It's solid.
Yeah, I know, I'm on TV now, I gotta, you know. No, so we just think it's time that, you know, the committee doesn't really have a mission at this point, and it's time we can, we can put that to rest, thank everyone for their service, and then handle it from there.
Thanks for the explanation. That was a lot, a lot of information, but all very straightforward. Any questions?
You, you said you spoke with Chief about the reallocation of the funds.
Mm-hmm, both of the Chiefs.
It would suggest to me that they're cool with it.
Oh yeah, I spoke to both the Chiefs. The, both of them had had requests to try to find resources to do these two programs, and then we talked about, you know, the regionalization of radios, and we've already spent quite a bit of money on radios to upgrade what we need for handhelds and portables and things in the trucks. So it looks like we were gonna be in good shape for that, and this reallocation would help them in other ways. So tried to keep it in the same vein, police and fire, but spread the money into a different, different place.
Makes sense. So assuming that you looked into just making sure that the sort of five-year software subscription was eligible for ARPA funds.
We did.
There's just, yeah, okay.
We did, yep, that was my first question.
All kinds of restrictions on when you just spend the money.
Yep, no, that is eligible ARPA expense, and you can, like, you can prepay those five years, so.
Got it.
We did, we checked it with a consultant before we brought this to you.
Okay. I know you said you were gonna do this, but I would love to see some kind of recap of what all the ARPA money was spent on.
Yep, I did attach it to the memo.
Oh, I didn't see it here.
That's okay. And that's just where it is. It's going to, it obviously changes as people spend money and stuff, so I will continue to update the spreadsheet and we'll bring that forward.
Fantastic, okay. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to award $75,000 in ARPA funds to Grafton Public Schools for the purchase of software to aid student security and mental health.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to rescind $50,000 in ARPA funding for radio upgrades, reallocate $25,000 to Grafton Fire for standpipe-related equipment, and reallocate the remaining $25,000 to Grafton Police for their drone program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I regretfully move the board vote to dissolve the ARPA Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would take a moment and I'm sure everybody else will, just to thank that committee and we'll have future opportunities to do so because, you know, they really did their due diligence and we invested those funds, I think, as best we could in as many concerns as we heard from residents, so just thank you to everybody involved.
Yeah, I guess I'll just echo that. I thought it was a very well-functioning committee. It was great to have everything be, all the decision-making, discussion, ideas, all of that be public and in full view with, you know, such large dollar amounts involved. And I think ultimately, when you look at the distribution of funds across the different services and operations, it's a great use of the money, so I think some excellent decisions were made.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I'll just chime in, I would like to thank my fellow committee members. I agree that it was a committee that I was really proud to be a part of and an enjoyable time when we met. It was very, we kept things very on track and our meetings were short and to the point, and so I thank all the committee members.
Yeah, it was a fun committee. I had a good time every time I went, it wasn't, you know, I guess it's fun to spend, spend money, but, but it was also fun to collect the data and hear what people had for ideas and, you know, we, it was a committee that definitely focused on public input and I think would have liked even more public input, like, we only had one person really come to a meeting, which is not atypical for local government, right? But we, we did, we wanted that feedback and I think that really drove the process, so it was a lot of fun.
It's a great kind of one-off opportunity.
Yep.
It's not sort of typical for the standard annual budget process, so.
Yeah, very cool.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, next up, we have the contract for upgrade to Conference Room F.
Yep, so this has been something we've been discussing for quite some time, off and on. This is the Cable Oversight Committee and Bob DeToma, who is the Director of, actually, I'm gonna mess up his title, he's at the Cable Studio, he runs the place. Anyways, and so this is to just continue that work, and the idea is that we are going to make Conference Room F function the same way that Conference Room A functions, so that when there's commonality and when you move from one location to another location, it's, everything works the same, you have the same capabilities and functions. So I think the only difference that I've heard so far is that school committee does like to use a projector that's on the wall for different things and for audience participation, so that may remain even though, you know, we don't have one down here, but that's kind of all part of that, that conversation, so. It's needed, F has definitely a different technology and older technology, so this will bring us up to, up to parity.
And Cable Oversight has been keen to point out that if, for whatever reason, we needed overflow space for A, we could then have that capability in F.
Great point, yep.
Which is a big, yeah, big, big sticking point.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve and sign the contract with re-envisioning technology for audiovisual upgrades to Conference Room A as presented.
F as presented.
Sorry, F. Conference Room F as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have the Kupola contract.
Yep, so similarly, we've been talking about the Kupola for quite some time, pretty much since I started here, and so now we finally were able to get our grant money in a row and our other funding in a row so that we could go out, get this bid wrapped up, and then actually start the work. So this contract is in the amount of $288,600. This is, this is all in, this is concluding what we've already spent, or this does not, we've already done the architectural component to it, so, you know, that's, this is just the remainder, so. We'll get the Kupola fixed, then we can fix the ceiling in the reading room, and then hopefully we're done with, with water for a little while.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, second.
All right.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Just a question, so I'm still getting there. I didn't go through this as well as I would have liked to, so it's 288, and then grant funds coming from where and how much?
So we are using, and, so, let me.
You can reference to me if it's here.
No, I can, I don't think that it is because I had to back into this. So $74,114 is coming from CPC. $109,000 is coming from the trustees of the library. $20,000 is coming from the Capitol Campaign, and $70,000 is a mass historic grant.
Okay.
Those numbers do not add up to the number that we have at the end, so I am moving some money in the, in the background, which will likely be the form of some kind of transfer by the end, but of $15,372 to make that match.
Okay, okay, great.
Any other questions? All right.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
Let me catch up here. I move the board vote to approve and sign the contract with the Alson Company for the Restoration of the Kupola at the Grafton Public Library.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next up, we have Select Board Reports.
I don't actually have any report reports, but I thought the board might want to express condolences and sympathies to Grafton PD and Officer Coggins on the passing of our K-9 officer, Lita, recently, who was, among other things, involved heavily in GPD outreach and town events.
Any other Select Board Reports?
I participated in the League of Women Voters evening to talk about running a campaign. It was one of the things I went to last year, and I think it was good, good conversation, not enough people. There weren't enough people from the public coming in, just one, I think, one individual, and then the rest were, all the rest of us, so, but I did that, and that was good. It was good, it was good conversation.
Yeah, yes.
So.
Thanks for doing that, Mark.
You're welcome. So I guess then, probably not gonna like that I do this, but I'd also like to express collectively and individually our condolences to you, Anne Marie, for your loss. I know how hard that is, and I know what you did to support your mom, so our condolences for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else from the Select Board Members? All right, on to the TA report.
Okay, so I don't have a formal TA report, it's been a little bit of a struggle over the last two days.
We've created everybody.
Really, it really has been. I did wanna just point out a couple of things, we did have a, I'm not gonna go into details on it, but we did have a medical emergency here yesterday, and I, you know, just wanna formally note that our staff did wonderfully, really just above and beyond on a number of different levels, from, you know, people just knowing they're gonna, you know, one person stands outside and waits for the ambulance, the other person stays on the phone with 911, the other person makes sure that the hallway is clear for the paramedics, like, they just, everybody just, it worked fantastically, and I'm very proud of all of them. Yeah, and that's, it's kinda, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Alamo.
I think it's fair to compliment you too, Evan, because you've responded quickly, swiftly, and probably at a really important time, so along with the staff that you're, you're offering some appreciation to, we should probably do that to you too. So, nice work.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, just to echo that quick, because you, yeah, I don't wanna undersell that, I mean, you went to the hospital, you spent time there, you waited for family, you know, these are, these are the things that you do for people you care about, and, and it's, it was a terrifying situation, but it feels like it went about as well as it possibly could have through the dedication of our, of our town staff, so thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. I do wanna note Cindy came with me to the hospital.
Yes.
Probably just as much to make sure I didn't get into trouble as, as anybody else, but, but yeah, no, I just, everyone went above and beyond, I mean, even from, you know, payroll and benefits staff, quickly getting into the personnel file, getting copies before the paramedics even, you know, had, had the situation under control for emergency contact and all that information, just, everybody just did wonderfully, so. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's it for, for tonight.
Great. I did wanna just bring up that Evan and I met with Mike Bruni, so he had asked for a discussion with the TA, with a board member, so we did have that discussion, it was a very civil discussion, he went through the whole history, the timeline, you know, raised all of his concerns in a very factual way, and I really appreciated his willingness to come in and, and take that approach with us. So he kind of captured the recap of the conversation, played it back to us in an email, and, yeah, so I thought it was a really positive way to deal with a difficult situation that he had, and, you know, we talked about some things that maybe could, you know, at least partly address some of the concerns that he had, and so there'll be a little bit of follow-up with that, but it was, it was a really good conversation, so I thought that was a positive for sure.
Yeah, I did as well. There was a couple of things that we talked about that involved my interaction, and I learned some things from Mike about how, what that looks like from the other side and how you can, you know, you can change and be better at, at what we do, so I really appreciated that, and he put everything in terms that were non-confrontational, we're just having a conversation, and this is how I felt about it, and this is how I think it could go better, and I, you know, you can't ask for any more than that from a resident who's dealing with some things that were probably not great to, to go through.
Right. It was really striking to me how it went, with him approaching us in a very factual way, but also with an attitude of, let's see what's possible. It wasn't, so we weren't defensive going into the conversation, I found that to be a very productive approach, and I found myself being much more open to hearing the issues that he was expressing, and to try to, you know, meet him in the middle where it was possible, and, and really wanting to partner with him to try to address some of those concerns, so it's, we see lots of different versions of resident interaction, so I give Mr. Bruni a ton of credit for taking that approach. It was some hardcore adulting, I guess is the way that I would describe it.
Yeah.
But I found it to be a really refreshing approach, and I think it, it produced a good result, you know, so anyways, it was a, it was a good meeting. Let's see, so, does anybody have any correspondence that they would like to address?
Do. And we talked about it last week, which I think is what precipitated the email that went into our correspondence, but again, I wanna thank Evan and the DPW and tout the new Welcome to Grafton sign that was installed recently on Milbury Street after the other one had just completely deteriorated, and good to see the sign back out in front of JCTV again. They both came out great, the installations looked beautiful, I loved the granite on either side there, you know, they look like a real nice test of time piece, so I hope people get out to see them and appreciate it.
Yeah.
They're nice.
Thank you.
Any other comments on correspondence? All right. We have no resignations. Do we have anybody online that would like to make a comment?
It's me again. Hold on. I don't know what to do without.
You are not a good Williams.
I, I'm not, and I'm, I'm trying to be. We have no hands on Zoom. I do know that he says that. Nobody's looking at what he says, but he does, no, there are no hands on Zooms.
Ms. Roy, do you have any public comments you'd like to issue? All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One comment that I'm surprised no one made a few weeks ago, just putting it out there, what was it, about three, four weeks ago, there was the Super Bowl, and the Kansas City Chiefs, I'm not a fan of them, I root for the worst team in the league, the Jets, but I do appreciate. And the Kansas City Chiefs, I'm not a fan of them, I root for the worst team in the league, the Jets, but I do appreciate. I do appreciate, um, uh, great, um, performances. And one of those performances was from, from the defensive coordinator of the Kansas City Chiefs. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, I think we'd be remiss if we did not acknowledge Grafton's own, uh, Steve Spagnolo, Spags. Uh, he was a big part of the win, so congratulations, I don't even know him, never met him, but I knew he lived here for a little while.
Excellent. Uh, next up, we have meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes from February the sixth and February the twentieth of twenty twenty-four as written.
Second.
I have a motion and two seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? The motion carries. Um, we will be passing over, as mentioned in the announcements, executive session, uh, and we are moving on to adjournment.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? The motion carries and we are adjourned.